Good evening, everyone. To our virtual meeting, apologize for any issues we may be having, or issues YouTube may be having. Few announcements first. Executive Order N-2920, Teleconference Flexibility 1.1. This meeting is being held pursuant to the procedures established in Executive Order N-2920 issued by California Governor Gavin Newsom on March 17, 2020. All board members may attend the meeting by teleconference. This meeting will be a virtual meeting only. The public may observe and address the meeting via the instructions in item 2.1. Number two, Public Access to the Ackerman Charter School Board of Trustees Meeting, 2.1, which is where we're having the issue. The public will have access to the Ackerman Charter School Board of Trustees Meeting via For those individuals who wish to make a public comment, please do so by completing the form here prior to 7:00 p.m. Moderator for the meeting will read your comments for the record. Just to note, YouTube is having issues with streaming. Number three announcement, should this board meeting encounter any security breach or inappropriate issues, the meeting will be ended immediately. The Ackerman Charter School Board of Trustees has taken measures to set restrictions and security features to protect meeting participants from inappropriate content or remarks. In the event the meeting is breached, the meeting will end immediately. I will have a call to order, a roll call vote. Whoa, I think. Michael Bellis?
Here.
David Slane?
Here.
Justin Hallberg? Or Justin Rednall?
That's you, Justin.
Was there a wedding we didn't know about?
Here, I guess, Rob.
All right, Justin Rednall, Mark Hallberg?
Here.
And Rob Conges are here. Well, that was fun. All right, reporting at a closed meeting, there is nothing to report. And so then we will move on to, let's see.
Audience to visitors.
Audience to visitors. This is the time at which anyone in the audience may address the board on any items not on the agenda, or any items on the consent agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes unless the board agrees to extend the time beyond three minutes. Members of the public utilizing a translator to address the board shall be limited to six minutes unless the board agrees to extend the time beyond six minutes. The board has the discretion to restrict public comments to those matters it deems relevant to its subject matter jurisdiction.
Board, we do have a number of comments. The comments I will be reading have been submitted via the Google form provided in the board agenda. Comments that were not submitted completely or correctly have been omitted. Ackerman School Board Supervisors, thank you in advance for the reading of this letter at your September board meeting. We had previously reached out to Mr. Graham with similar concerns, and I need to first compliment his prompt and honest response. In fact, every time we bring something forward, he is quick to respond and in most cases invites us in for an in-person meeting to discuss. For this, I would like to compliment him in front of the board. Our family has now sent two children through Bowman, and although we haven't always seen eye to eye on policies, I have felt in the past that this school has always acted in the best interest of the students. Unfortunately, our family no longer feels this is the case. I will ask similar questions of you that I did, Mr. Graham. How are you preparing our eighth grade student for high school? How is it that TK children, germ spreaders, are allowed on campus more frequently than 12 and 13-year-olds? And how do you send a survey that only asks parents if they prefer two days or no days? Whether you can do it or not, why not ask if they prefer three, four, five days and let the survey speak for itself? This school district has an incredible reputation in Northern California. Recently, our family was approached by a real estate agent to sell her home to a family relocating from the Bay Area. Let me tell you, our home is not for sale, nor has it ever been listed since we purchased in 2004. When I contacted the agent, there were many reasons for the inquiry, but one of the first reasons she told me was that the school district was desirable. I don't know what to tell her. Was it desirable in the past? Yes. Can we honestly say that it still is? I'm not sure. You all have an obligation to these students that is not being fulfilled. From what I have read statewide, the California Teachers Association seems to have forgotten why they got involved in education. For the kids, they say, and this is shameful. Ask your students if they know that the reason they are not back in school is because of the teachers and their union. Two things will happen. They will ask, what is a union? And they will ask why their teachers don't want them to come back to school. Shameful. In closing, please do the right thing and get our daughter back to school. We have either already read or will read my daughter's letter to all of you. I feel it is important to let you know that neither of her parents edited, directed, influenced, or changed a single word that she wrote. We teach our daughter to be an advocate for what is right, and she did this all on her own, and we could not be more proud of her. Thank you all for your time. We tend to be more vocal than others, but you all know as well as I do from your survey results that we are not in the minority opinion as it relates to getting these kids back in school. We are asking that you do the right thing by our daughter and the rest of these students. Attending school to get an education is important. What is more important is that some students use school as an escape from their day-to-day life. We are fortunate that this is not the case for our daughter, but this is bigger than our daughter. Thank you again for your time and consideration. Please do the right thing and get our kids back in school full-time. Sincerely, Scott and Melissa. Dear Mr. Graham, I understand that you may be in a tough position trying to get students back in school, but here are a few things I thought I would share with you. First of all, the attention span of a four-year-old is about 16 minutes, while the attention span of a 12-year-old ranges from 24 to 36 minutes, which is around double the amount of time a four-year-old can take. This is just one of the many reasons why I believe that the eighth grade class in particular should resume in-person learning as fast as possible for as many days as possible. Not only are we going to high school next year, and eighth grade is supposed to prepare us for that, but we have many large finals this year that determine our advancement to the next grade. Depression, stress, social skills, these are just some of the problems facing isolated teenagers right now. To begin, researchers from the Norwegian Institute of Public Health conducted a quantitative study of 4,526 adolescents between 13 and 19 years old, and found that social support from friends and spending spare time with friends were the strongest protective factors against mental disorders among adolescents. Significantly, more than one in three girls without a close friend reported experiencing depressive symptoms. Hartburg &amp; Hegna, 2014. In addition, previous research has revealed that socially isolated children are more likely to be psychologically distressed in adulthood. By receiving social assistance, studies show that children can cope more easily with high levels of stress. Being in school and learning in a classroom setting is just as important as anything else. For example, some children need to be challenged to excel in school, and they thrive when they are involved in some form of a healthy competition. Furthermore, students in school are exposed to a whole range of perspectives and ideas because their classmates come from different backgrounds, personal beliefs, and experiences. This provides inspiration to them so they are stimulated to think and criticize positively. In conclusion, I believe that the eighth grade class in particular should resume in-person learning as fast as possible for as many days as possible. We are going into high school next year and need to be prepared. Also, the finals we are going to face can best be tackled with in-person learning. Thank you for your time. I hope what I have written here you will take into consideration. Sincerely, Chloe Holitz, eighth grade student. I hope for school to reopen and my kids to be on campus learning. Name withheld. It is extremely important that Bowman School reopen for the benefit of the students and all involved. My three daughters have all experienced difficulties with distance learning, and the strain it has had on them has been terrible. This has been an extremely difficult time for me and my husband, who each day try to help them while still having to maintain our jobs and responsibilities. Distance learning, although the teachers all work diligently each day, is not as effective as in-person instruction and has resulted in my children being unhappy during school as well as experiencing anxiety and frustration trying to keep up with everything that is involved. The technology issues are a daily occurrence, but this significantly impacts the children's ability to learn when they are unable to connect or are kicked out of their virtual classes and cuts into time they should be learning. For the well-being of the children and their families, the school needs to reopen and allow those that would like to go back the opportunity to do so. The children deserve this, and so do their families. Thank you. I feel that schools should resume to five days a week as it was before, and that measures should be taken to increase sanitation and proper hand washing and hygiene. Temperatures should be taken daily of all students upon arriving, and any students that have a temperature over 100.4 should be sent home. Masks should be worn when students are unable to maintain a distance of at least six feet. If there are clear dividers between desks, then students should not be required to wear a mask while in their assigned seat with a partition between them and neighboring classmates. Desks and partitions should be cleared daily, cleaned daily, excuse me. Students should be required to wash hands upon entering the classroom each time. Keeping our students at home behind a computer screen is not healthy for many reasons. First and foremost, many of these children are suffering from depression and anxiety from this sudden shift in society, which has directly impacted their daily routine. They are not able to get socialization, exercise, or one-on-one interaction with their teacher that is so important at this stage of their lives and education. As a nurse working in the acute care center, I have seen how various regulations surrounding this virus have changed, and feel that returning to school is both safe as well as needed. Name withheld. Open normal, five days a week, no masks. Thank you all for ensuring our children are able to access the full curriculum and all learning objectives during difficult times. Everyone I know is mindful and appreciative of the hurdles you have cleared for our children. That said, I would describe the general vibe among the various parents I am in contact with as being confused. On September 10th, we received an email that detailed the plan to go back to school two days a week, Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, Friday, and stating that fourth through eighth grade families should complete the survey to state our choice of hybrid or distance learning. Despite having already made our choice in that survey, on 9/16, we received an email -- I'm sorry, on 9/16, we received an email stating that we will need to fill out another choice survey soon. In the background, we are seeing districts around Placer County opening up, as well as hearing rumors of a union impasse. I respectfully request that you share with us more transparency in what is happening. Please be open, honest, clear, and candid explaining the following. Is Bowman truly at an impasse with the union? If so, what are the issues? Why are we being asked to fill out a new survey? When can we expect a true and actionable plan? Thank you for helping us understand the full picture. Name withheld. Please let our kids back to school. It is so important for their mental and emotional health, and I have full trust that the Bowman staff will keep our kids safe. Let us make the choice and open our school. I believe schools should open five days a week, even in half-days. Kids are the future and need a full education, socialized face-to-face, not behind a screen. This virus is here to stay. We as a society need to learn to live with it, and the sooner we do, the better off we will be. I'm thankful for teachers that they have decided to take a role that very few can do. Teachers, remember why you became a teacher. To help a child in need, be a role model. Help the less fortunate kids that only get to be themselves at school because their home life is not good. To help kids set goals to become the professional they dream of and educate them as they are the future of America. We all will be relying on them. Name withheld. My family is in full support of the school opening to a normal schedule. We understand that things may be different with safety protocols in place. I have three children spanning seventh, fourth, and second grade. All three daily are outspoken about the struggles of distance learning. We almost daily struggle with tears and fears of being left behind, missing classmates and time with the teacher. Seeing schools in our neighbor Nevada County, having options for all-day programs is frustrating. Now that we are off the list, it is hard to understand why we can't comply with the same model. They have safely been open since August, allowing for full-time, hybrid, and distance learning. Please, for our children's mental and physical health, consider reopening. I am very torn about the reopening. I am supportive of the current plan, which to my understanding limits class size to 10 kids with all of the published precautions in place. I am not a risk taker, and with immunocompromised family members would not feel comfortable sending my kids back if class sizes were larger or if some of the safety guidelines, such as wearing masks indoors, were relaxed. However, I am concerned about my kids wearing masks all day. They have been practicing, but even after much practice and encouragement, still become agitated and distracted if worn for long periods. My hope is that plenty of time will be spent outdoors where they can take a break from wearing masks. My children are in desperate need of and in-person education for socialization and as a break from distance learning. Distance learning is a stress they are not handling well, no matter how much encouragement, supervision, and even therapy sessions that we go through for their mental well-being, and so we are excited to go back under the hybrid plan with all safety precautions in place. My concern is heightened as we approach flu season, so the more precautions that can be put into place, the safer and more confident I will feel sending my children to school. Name withheld. Dear Mr. Graham, Mrs. Wells, and all of the faculty and staff at Bowman School, the Buckingham family would like to thank you all for your hard work that you've done to try and make a safe and educational transition back to school for our children. Most people are not aware of all the regulations and complexities involved with creating a hybrid schedule, while at the same time following the guidelines of the county health department, the CDE, and the governor. We want you to know that we appreciate you and are optimistic that you will do the right thing by our kids by listening to science while also being mindful of the students that need to socialize and be back on campus when it's safe. The Buckingham family. It should be our expectation that all students in all grades receive the same high-quality academic experience at Bowman. This is true not only for those students attending in person, but also for those choosing to continue with distance learning. Accordingly, we must consider options that afford distance learners the opportunity to actively engage and participate in live classroom discussion with their teachers and peers. It goes without saying that there are critically important learning benefits that come from questions, dialogue, and interactions that occur between students and teachers. To ensure this opportunity for distance learners, we believe the only viable option is to livestream classroom instruction. We do not believe pre-recorded videos are acceptable for an equal academic experience. Please give strong consideration to making livestreaming a mandatory aspect of distance learning and not merely optional by teacher. To do otherwise simply because parents are uncomfortable or have unfortunate health risks would unfairly cheat students out of a richer academic and social learning environment. Name withheld. We sincerely thank you for all of your effort. We can't imagine how difficult it must be to weigh all of the confounding guidance, opinions, etc. This has not been easy for anyone. We are certainly interested in our kids returning to school, but the particulars of a safe reopening plan are important to us. We've had a difficult time with some of the previous surveys that did not include the health and safety precautions. We look forward to reviewing a detailed safety plan in the next iteration. We understand that returning to school for 2021 year will be different than any other year. Given the ongoing pandemic, we expect reopening will include a level of social distancing and other requirements to prevent, limit, transition of illness. While we recognize it must be impossible to keep everyone happy, we trust that the top priority of reopening accounts for the health and safety of the Bowman community. We are so impressed with our kids' teachers this year. They are doing such an amazing job providing high-quality education, adjusting their sails while the winds constantly change. We are so appreciative. Thank you again for all of your efforts, Michelle and Matt. In our home, we are having some struggles with the delivery of instruction for DL. There are lots of tears shed each week. Things are not getting better, and the social-emotional damage this is doing to our children is unacceptable. The teachers are stressed out and sometimes even snappy to the students. My son told me that he is afraid to ask the teacher to slow down because he does not want to get in trouble. I do not understand how educators can think distance learning is an effective teaching model for children who cannot read and/or navigate a Chromebook, let alone handle tech issues. The distance learning model has many limitations. For example, there is no way a teacher to properly check for understanding from each child. Teachers cannot see who is struggling and who is far exceeding expectations when only looking at a small square of 22 children at a time. Furthermore, a teacher cannot see the students' faces or movements to track who is actually keeping up or falling behind. There have been several days where I, a working mother, end up re-teaching the concepts or lessons because there was just too much going on during the Google Meet. Example, kids calling out of turn, unmuted microphones, the teacher going too fast, expectations too high. Distance learning is not working for my children, nor is it working for me. I wake up each day worried about how much farther my children will fall behind due to insufficient instruction. I lose sleep over how much more their psyche and self-esteem as learners will be damaged. I am trying each day to make lemonade out of lemons, but I am just tired, and so are my children. Please tell us, the parents, how much damage to our children and their education will it take to get us back to school? Last item, why are we seemingly the only school district without a start date? Our district is not forthcoming with information. We, the parents, are asking for transparency in regards to who is keeping us from school and why. Sincerely, a concerned parent. Our son is desperate for school to resume and to be able to learn with teachers and play with his friends. We are ready for school to resume full-time. We are comfortable with fully returning to school. We would be in full support of reopening to the fullest measure possible. If there is any way the parents can assist, we are here to help make it happen. Thank you. I would like to start with thank you for keeping our children safe during this pandemic. How will you continue to protect them when all the children return on campus? You can't keep them six feet apart in all classrooms. Will the plexiglass be around the desk three sides? Taking temperatures isn't enough because COVID doesn't always have temperatures. Will they be early outs during the winter due to higher flu season? Kids need to be in school. Yes, they are social beings, but more than that, they thrive on routine and school. With all its edges, corners, and soft or rough landings is their routine. There have been way too many tears and sad days with this distance learning. Maybe it was necessary to try it, but it is time to end this experiment. Our children's mental health is at stake. Children have a constitutional right to an education. Parents who are still fearful, for whatever reason, can continue homeschooling, but parents who trust their children's immune system shouldn't have to continue. The damage being done to these children's psyches can still be repaired, but how long must they be forced to hide in their homes, living in fear away from any camaraderie? It's already been too long, and as far as parents just need a babysitter, I say no. They need teachers. Bowman School needs to open immediately. This is ridiculous. Our kids are suffering depression, suicidal thoughts, grades, social anxiety, increased screen time usage, especially for non-academic activities, has been found to be linked with increases in depression, anxiety, and perceived attention problems. Single working parents can't be there for their kids to help them educate them. The pressure is too much for the child. Dear Board of Trustees, our names are Marin and Nate Whitson, and we are parents of a second and fourth grader at Bowman. We want to start by thanking the teachers, administration, and staff for all of their hard work making this first month of the school year as good as it can possibly be in the midst of this pandemic. While it hasn't been easy for any of us, we appreciate all of their efforts immensely. While are certainly very interested in having our kids return to in-person school, we feel that it is very important that the school reopen in a way that is as safe as possible. To that end, we are writing to voice support for a hybrid model similar to what was outlined by Mr. Graham in the most recent survey. We expect Bowman to take mask, social distancing, and other health precautions seriously. We were gratified to see many specifics about precautions as well as detailed plans for masks, social distancing, etc. in the ALCA document. We expect Bowman to adhere to these plans once it reopens. We are looking forward to receiving information when it is available about plans for testing as well as contingencies should a student or staff member test positive for COVID-19. While we imagine a hybrid model is probably very difficult to do, particularly for teachers, we feel with this model, it is much more likely that the school will be successful in reopening while also getting kids on campus at least some of the time. We hope that Bowman will be able to safely return to a full-day, in-person, five-days-a-week schooling sooner rather than later, and we hope that reopening in a hybrid model will be a reasonable step in that direction. Marin and Nate. And this is our final letter. To whom it may concern, I want to thank the teachers and administration for all that they have done in the past 27 days of distance learning. I too have been holding up my end of the bargain and working hard to ensure my students, along with their teachers, success in their virtual classrooms. I am a concerned parent of two students at Bowman. My concerns stem from the fact that we have yet to receive direction on the reopening of our school, and I have wiped the tears for my children's eyes too many times to count. Other schools within Placer County have reopened, which I am sure you are seeing frustration coming from all ends. I am asking admin, the board, and BADA to please clear up this confusion among parents, those that are speaking out and those who are afraid to. Yes, I have heard those words in the past months, which is a whole other mess for another time. We are asking you to open up the campus to in-person learning and ask that you allow us as parents and guardians to help make it happen. BADA and admin, what do you need? How can we make this happen? Please let us help so we can all work together. Name withheld. That was the last letter.
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you to everybody that did send in letters, whether or not they were read. We appreciate that. We understand the frustration. My personal belief is that the emotional and psychological impact that this is having for distance learning is much more dangerous now than coronavirus. So, we are working. We're trying to get the school back open in some manner. So, we look forward to getting that done. All right, so moving on then. 9.1, the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan.
Good evening, Board. So, last meeting, we brought forth to you the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan, also known as the LCAP or the LCP, as they have kind of renamed it to limit confusion. And we presented the plan to you, and tonight is the time that we have heard, we've put out, since then, we have put out an email to parents, to staff, and to PCLE for comments, questions, edits, suggestions. We received five emails, return emails from parents, most of them questioning, not particularly the plan, but their questions were surrounded about what is our reopening plan, and when are the dates, and what will the safety precautions be that are in place. So, we have emailed those parents back that information with what we could, but it didn't really change what we put in the plan. We received one staff member. We received one staff member comment, and we made that change. It was regarding their meeting times or their frequency of meetings, excuse me. And then PCOE, who reviewed the entire document and sent back suggestions, sent back. Well, it was a three-page email on suggestions of what they had to do. So Laura Wilkinson and I got to work with Mr. Graham and looked at each of these suggestions and added what we could and what we needed to. A lot of the suggestions were about adding more specifics, not anything to change, but adding more specifics that they were looking for. You know, about stakeholder engagement. How did we exactly, did we do that? How are we planning to exactly our outreach and engagement from parents and families? To parents and families, excuse me. So we've made those recommended changes and additions as needed so that you have the entire document now, and it's ready for your vote. If you don't have any questions.
Does anybody have any questions?
Most of you are muted, so you'd have to unmute if you do have a question.
Hey Kristen, I was curious. I was looking at the cost tally near the bottom, and there was a $40,000 figure. I couldn't see what it was attributed to.
That would be our part-time custodial that we added.
Thank you. Thank you.
She was already part-time, so we added the other part.
I saw Michael shaking his head. No. Justin, Mark, do you guys have any questions?
No questions from me. I think it looks great.
Just so you know, that once this is adopted, we send it back to PCOE, and they'll review it one more time and look for any other changes that they, there are suggestions that they have. And we can make those, or we don't have to because they are in the form of suggestions, and then it goes to the state.
Okay, we approve the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan as presented. Mr. Bellis making the motion, sorry.
Mark Hallberg, I'll second the motion.
Okay, roll call, vote. Michael Bellis.
Aye.
Mark Hallberg.
Aye.
Justin Rednall.
Aye.
David Slane.
Aye.
Rob Congies are aye.
And thank you for the work on that. Thanks.
Yeah. Great job.
Couldn't have done it without Laura.
Very extensive document.
For sure.
So let's see, we have October 14th is Charter Information Night and a board meeting.
We're actually going to cancel the Information Night due to COVID.
Okay.
And due to all the things we're dealing with, it will be a board meeting night. We're gonna have, we're gonna send out emails and that kind of thing and post it on our website. And we'll just have the one big meeting in January as normal.
Okay, so no Charter Information Night in October, but there is a board meeting.
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments by the board?
I was just curious, what is preventing us from meeting as a body back in the multipurpose room?
Now that we're off the monitoring list as a county, we can do that.
It would be my desire to let people see here and feel each other and be in front of people again. And it would seem like for as few people as attend hours, we could easily accommodate the physical distancing.
So I would agree with that. I think that's a great idea.
One of my concerns was doing that before we were actually open for in-person instruction.
Yep.
Because you'd have had 20 more letters.
Why are you?
So yeah, so loud and clear.
Yeah, we would love to meet in person. I would love to meet in person. Okay, if there's nothing else, then we shall adjourn.
Thank you all. Be safe.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.